Join.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council Regular Meeting to order for November 3rd, 2025. If everyone would stand and remain standing, we're going to have the invocation by Councilman Savage, and then we'll do the Pledge of Wages.
Pleasure, Senator Bowden. Just thank you for the opportunity to have him here to see the Lord. We just thank you for our town, Lord. We thank you for each sermon of the town, Lord, each organization within the town. And we'll just ask a special blessing that we would always do those things according to your will, in your direction, Lord, and we just, we just ask that you protect our employees, Lord, and have protection around them, our EMS, our other first responders, and all our employees, Lord, just continue to be with us, God, as direct as everything you did in said, in the grace of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Wages.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, before we get started with the business of the meeting, the government business, I've got a special proclamation that the town would like to give to one of our esteemed citizens. This certificate of recognition is presented to Mr. James W. Carpenter, Senior, whereas Mr. Carpenter was born on October 9th, 1935, on Shingatig Island, and has been a lifelong and valued citizen of the town of Shingatig, and whereas Mr. Carpenter was recently honored by relatives and friends on the occasion of his 90th birthday, and whereas Mr. Carpenter faithfully served his country in the United States Coast Guard, completing a distinguished career spanning 20 years, and whereas Mr. Carpenter married Miss Marlene Collins on June 4th, 1955, a loving union of 70 years, and together they have been blessed with two children, Jim Jr. and Jill, four grandsons and seven great-grandchildren, and whereas Mr. Carpenter has made significant contributions to the Shingatig community by authoring four books, including a definitive historical record of the island's cemeteries and graveyards, and the many past citizens of our community, as well as a detailed chronicle of Shingatig's businesses throughout the years. Now, therefore, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Shingatig, I do hereby deem it an honor and a privilege to extend this tribute to Mr. James W. Carpenter, Senior, on the joyous occasion of his 90th birthday, with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more happy and healthy, fulfilling years. How you doing? Good, good, good.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all the councilmen and the work that they've done on this side, and I love this football, and I thank you all for this. I appreciate it.
All right, we're going to get down to some business now. We don't have any remote participation. We're going to start with public comment, and Mike, if you could read the rules for public comment, please?
Yes, ma'am. Rules for public comment: All attendees wishing to speak shall sign up on the provided roster. Speakers must preface all comments by stating their name and 911 address. Comments shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. A speaker cannot reserve or transfer time to another speaker. Speakers must not use profanity, threatening language, or otherwise be abusive of council members or staff. Speakers shall not address specific personnel matters which involve individual employees in a public meeting. Members of council will not answer questions directly or engage with speakers. A specific question shall be directed to the mayor, who shall at her direction solicit a response from the appropriate staff member.
All right, first up, Matthew Reed. Welcome back to Council Chambers.
Long time. Matthew Reed, 7265 Oak Ridge Place. I'm here tonight, as most of you all know, it's, we've had a lot of extremely high tides, a lot of flooding. Particularly, we've never seen water on our property except for Hurricane Sandy, and that happened right after the town put three huge concrete culverts on East Side Drive over where the little gut that comes up and goes out by Pony Swim laying out that way. The reason I'm in here, we need floodgates or something on those pipes. The water is coming through those pipes, it's pre-flooding all the woods, all up behind the graveyard over there. It come, it came through as far as Oak Ridge townhouses, and there was three to four inches of water on the road in the middle there. So it was going in, septic, septic alarms were going off everywhere. I've talked to a couple of different people. They're like, well, it comes over the road anyway. Well, I do know it comes over the road anyway, and it comes in Memorial Park and comes all up in there. That's all fine and well. But by the time it crossed the road, we're almost at mean-high tide, because I've gone out and did timestamp pictures, videos of everything, how it's flowing and as far as it's going, because it's going as far as Rachel Lane, which is down Ridge Road, at least a half mile from where this culvert is. And it's flowing with power coming through everywhere, going over into the horse pen, all back, everywhere back in there, my entire yard. And the last time that I brought it up was to Harvey when he was Public Works, and that was right after Hurricane Sandy, and nothing's ever done about those pipes then. And we've never really had any more tides like that since till the one that these last couple, especially the one with the storm that went by offshore. That was one of the highest tides I've seen here since Sandy. But I was here to see if maybe we could get floodgates done on those pipes, if you could look into it. If you need, I've got videos, pictures, anything, just feel free to get with me. I can meet you there. I can show you where it's going. I can show you exactly what it's doing to all the properties back through there. And then, when I was on council, another thing I've got, I had pushed to get floodgates put everywhere, foot of the bridge. I'm tired of driving through saltwater at the foot of the bridge. All down Main Street, all the culverts, I mean, all the water coming up through the, through the drains is ridiculous. I mean, yes, it does come over the road at some point, and there's nothing you can do about that, I understand that. But if you can prevent these regular high tides from coming up on the road, that would be a huge help. And I mean, I, I'm guessing it was probably seven, eight years ago that I had pushed to get floodgates fixed and put everywhere they needed to be, over on East Side, at the foot of the bridge. My guess is they've probably never been serviced or anything done to them. They're probably backed up with oyster shells and don't even close anymore. So I just, you know, wanted to bring it to y'all's attention and have it checked out and looked into and see if it's something you all can fix to try to alleviate some of this saltwater going all up under people's cars and tearing everything up. I mean, I'm sure Roger Adams loves it, but, you know, people, I, I know I don't care to drive my vehicles through it, so that's about all I have, but it's, I mean, like I said, if anybody would like to look at the pictures, the videos I've got, I'd be more than glad to show you what exactly is happening with the tide. And this is, I got videos of right when it starts to cross the road and all the flooding that's already done prior to it coming over the road, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shoot, shoot me those pictures and stuff that you got. You got my number?
Yep.
Thank you. So, Mr. Stuart Baker. Welcome back to Town of Shingatig.
Welcome back to Council Chambers. How about that? There you go. There you go. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I had an opportunity today to spend some valuable time with town manager Talbot, and we discussed several things relative to the community, and he confirmed a couple of my ongoing observations that I've had for many years recently. One is my perceived need, and I hope the council would agree, for a town attorney to be on retention. The town of Shingatig is big business. The money that passes through, and not only the money that passes through this town office, but the amount of issues that you run up against, the beach being one issue. You know, we're talking about, Matthew just mentioned about drainage, that gets into drainage easements, as Wes is very well aware of. And years ago, we went to great extremes to acquire easements, but they're not being maintained in lots of areas. But I think having a town attorney would assist with a lot of that. It would be a resource for members of the council or the town manager to draw on, on an as-needed basis, come from a time that it was invaluable having that service at the town of Shingatig. The other thing is, in talking with Mr. Talbot today, specifically in the realm of some of the financial issues, reviewing one of the audits, the situation that's ongoing with the current audit structure, audit situation with the town not being complete, I think it would behoove the council and your next RFP to require the auditor to conduct the audit in the town office. It was done like that for many, many years. I understand that changed as a result of COVID, you know, and these recommendations are made, you know, I'm glad to see that you finally got another planner hired and got them on board, so it appears to be time to go ahead and address the town attorney situation. Now, I know later in the meeting, changing subjects, we're going to talk about the potential acquisition of a piece of property. If the location is where I suspect it is, it raises lots of concerns, especially with some other island folks that I've talked to, because if it is on the south end of the island, the perception of it comes across is that it may, if you acquire it, it's being put there just for the benefit of two existing businesses. That does not present a situation of being available for town folks, but just to subsidize two businesses. It raises lots of concerns. I hope you take that into consideration in your due diligence about final actions on that, and I look forward to Mr. Talbot's presentation later regarding that subject, because I can, having a job justifying taking that property off the town tax rolls for another part. I understand the town plan about maintaining access to water, it's their heritage, but I'm also concerned with, you know, we had a potential business plan to go in there. That would have been not only property tax, but meals tax. And that situation still could exist, maybe not with that particular person, but with another. But if you take it off the tax rolls, you don't have that income coming in. So with that, have a good meeting.
Joanne?
Good evening, Mayor Bowden, Town Council staff. Just a quick wrap-up of Oyster Festival back on October 11th. I just want to thank the town for their continued support of the festivals, Public Works, the police department, fire company, EMS, and all those who attended and volunteered at the event. We greatly appreciate your support. It takes about 250, 300, oh, sorry, Joanne Moore, Executive Director, Shingatig Chamber of Commerce, 673-888-1250. I feel like I'm forgetting something. But it takes about 250 or 300 volunteers from set up to the day of and take down to, to hold an event like the Oyster Festival. And so we're very, very thankful for the support that we received from the town and from the community at large to make that happen. It was a great day. Weather held out. We couldn't have really asked for anything better than what we got that day, so we thank you all. Also, would like to invite you all on Friday to our morning mingle that the chamber's holding. It's a new initiative we started earlier this year, but it's open to chamber members, community partners, potential chamber members, to learn more about what the chamber does, to network, to have a light breakfast. So we invite all of you to attend that. It's from 8 to 9:30 in the chamber office. And next up, we have our old-fashioned Christmas parade. It'll be on Saturday, December 6th. And the theme this year is a Saltwater Christmas, celebrating the saltwater cowboys and cowgirls through 100 years of pony penning. So it's sort of the culmination of the year of celebrating Pony Swim and the Fire Company, and thought this was a great way to end the year. So we invite you all to participate in the parade, and we encourage businesses and organizations, fire companies, equestrian teams, car clubs, families, friends, whoever wants to participate, to, to sign up. The application is on the chamber website and in the chamber office. So thank you.
Thank you. Tina?
Tina Zoller, 3454 Main Street. And I'm kind of going to echo a little bit about what Matt said about flooding. And Wes, thank you so much. I wanted to also compliment the Public Works staff, because we went to see Wes and talk about it, and the next day we had a bunch of guys over. I'm not sure what was discussed, because they didn't really talk to me too much, but there's a problem with our drain that was installed back in the 50s. It connects along the side of our property to the drain that's in the street on South Main and then out into the bay. And nothing is draining. The drain is not draining. So we're thinking that it's probably the valve that was in there that is supposed to cut off when the tide is coming up, because like Matt, our property hasn't flooded like this since Sandy, and this was on the, the storm of the 12th. It, we had about 18 inches in our garage, because we have the water line, we could see it. It was, it's starting, it's not gone down yet. It's still there. I mean, it's not in our garage, but I mean, the water by the drain is still there to the point where it's starting to encroach on our septic. And we just installed that septic at a great expense, so I do not want to have to do that again. I'm not sure what was resolved, but I think we need to get somebody in there to look at it. So we called a plumber, and he's like, not me. He suggested that we check with Jimmy Bundick. I don't know, and honestly, we're at a loss, but it does affect Main Street. Like you said, people are going to drive their vehicles through saltwater. Our, our entire yard is dead. The roses I had in the front, R.I.P. Everything is brown. Our grass, all the way back to the kites, is dead. It's all, you know, salt. We put in bushes last year, and saltwater came up. We put a berm and replanted. They're dead. They're dead. The magnolia we planted is dead. Everything is dead. So that's sad, but like, the street still has standing water in it, and we have minnows, literally minnows. And if you need bait, come on back with a net, and you can get them behind my garage. So I appreciate everything that they did, but we need some advice, and I don't know what to do about that. And also, just as an aside, the last time I came to council, like, months ago, I mentioned that there's a, a dock that's falling down, just a couple doors to the north of our property, and it's still falling down. You know, we got pieces of it up in the storm, and pieces from other places. There's a lot of, you know, the tides are high, we're getting pieces of it. And I'm not sure who is responsible for removing it, but we had friends that were building, so they came and took a lot of lumber. But thank you very much. And again, thank you very much to Wes and his staff. They were really, really helpful and very responsive, but unfortunately, we, we still need help. We don't know what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Tina. Carrie Caesar, or Caesar Carrie?
I got it.
You?
All right.
Willow Street, right? Willow, Willow Street?
37, yes. My name is Carrie Caesar at 3768 Willow Street. Greetings, Mayor and council members. Happy to be here. I, my husband and I bought the house about 10 years ago. We live on Willow, about less than one block from church where it ends. And so I guess you'd call that the north end of Willow. And the reason why I wanted to address the council was because in the summertime, particularly the traffic on Willow can go rather fast, and a lot of children, kids ride their bikes. My front door, and I know it's, it's my front door, so I, I, I take responsibility for that, but if I walk out my front steps, Willow Street is right there. So should I fall, or, you know, if there's, somebody tumbles out the door, there's traffic that goes fast. And I just wanted to ask the council if there was a way to monitor traffic on that street to see perhaps, could we do some traffic calming? Do we need to do it? People use Willow as a thoroughfare, because Main is, well, for obvious reasons, it's an easy street to go from, I guess it ends at BB, I'm not sure. From one end to the other, you could go pretty quick. So I just wanted to ask the council if we could assess that situation and maybe address the traffic and calm it down a bit for public safety. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eli Grubin?
I'm Eli Grubin, 4425 East Winds. Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, members of council staff. I'm here to talk about the proposed C2 zoning change, and I guess express my opposition to it. As I understand, though, it's much improved from last time with the inclusion of group B businesses being allowed by right. I think that makes it a lot better. That means that places 50 and under are allowed by right, which makes a lot more sense to me personally, so I'm glad to see that improvement. But at the same time, I don't see it fundamentally makes sense in terms of the, you know, points of zoning, in terms of maintaining compatible land use. Many of the, many of the uses which would be prohibited now, or not prohibited, but would require a conditional use permit, are already going on in that area, so I don't really think it makes sense fundamentally. And then I did notice there's an oversight, or maybe it's not an oversight, but hotels are deleted from the use category, but they are not included in group A or group B. They're actually in group R of the Virginia Construction Code, and so hotels would be just entirely banned, which maybe that is the goal. But I just, I thought, it seemed like we thought before that hotels over 50 would have to get a CUP, which would make some sense to me, but just because hotels are in group R of the Virginia Construction Code, they're not allowed at all anymore under this proposed change, so. Yeah, that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Not sure about this first name. Is it Renata?
It's Renata.
Renata Murphy?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Evening, Shinkatiki Council. Hi, I'm Renata Murphy, 7550 East Side Road. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about this. My name is Renata again, and my husband Dave and I own Miss Molly's Inn, Bed and Breakfast on Main Street. And I'm here tonight because of ongoing noise violations from Shinkatiki. This is probably not news to any of you guys. I believe that Tommy Clark has been here also talking to you about this. But I'm here tonight because of the ongoing noise violations next door. They directly harm our business, our guest experience, and the reputation of Shinkatiki, I believe, as a historic and family-friendly destination. We've got ongoing noise issues with Shinkatiki. They've been going on for years, since we bought Miss Molly's, really the first weekend we bought Miss Molly's. And we have tried to talk directly to the owner, with no luck whatsoever. We've tried nice, we've tried, put some sugar on it, it, we get no response whatsoever. Really, the only thing we've ever been able to do is call the local police, and they've really been wonderful and responsive, but that hasn't really done anything either. So just yesterday, we received a five-star review that would have been entirely positive, except the guests stated that they will not return solely because of the noise from Shinkatiki, which went on past midnight and caused the wa, in their words, and, and I can verify this from the time that Dave and I lived on the third floor of Miss Molly's, that caused the walls of our inn to vibrate. They wrote, quote, "I would love to come back, but as long as the Tiki bar is next door, I will not." They also stated they contacted the Chamber of Commerce themselves because they were shocked that this is loud on Main Street of Shinkatiki, of Shinkatiki. This past weekend alone, on both Friday and Saturday night, our guests were forced to call the police after 10:00 PM because the bar exceeded the town's noise ordinance once again. Officers responded both nights and confirmed the violation. One night, the noise resumed even after the police first responded, causing the need for a state police officer to come out. As far as what we know about the noise ordinance, it was our understanding, it was a three-strikes-you're-out sort of ordinance, so we're, we're sort of wondering, is that three strikes, you're out? If they had a violation on a Friday night, a violation on a Saturday night, and then even after the Shinkatiki police confirmed that this was violating the noise ordinance, then again, a state trooper had to come out later in the evening on Saturday and again ask them to stop. Is that three violations? We're not sure. So, I mean, we believe that we've acted responsibly in every step. We installed a decibel, decibel meter ourselves on our property, so we could respond as fast as possible. We understand that our guests have to call, that we have to be on property or the guests have to call, and that that's not a violation until the police come out and actually use their monitor to see if, in fact, the noise is above the certain decibels. But if we have a monitor on site, at least we're aware of what's going on and how loud the noise is. We call the police, you know, only when the bar is above those limits. And we've communicated repeatedly with the town, with law enforcement. We've tried to talk to the owner over and over and over again. My daughter goes over and tries to talk to the owner. Gets a little bit more success than I do, because she's younger, she's cute. But, you know, we've reached the, the point where this is no longer just a nuisance, it's a documented business loss. Guests are choosing not to return, they're telling others not to stay on Main Street because of businesses knowingly violating town law on a nightly, regular basis. Shinkatiki stated, stated quiet hours are after 10:00 PM. We're simply asking that this ordinance be enforced. So that's it. Sorry. Okay. All right. So that's all. I do have a leave behind with the facts I just mentioned and the information and a copy of the review.
Can you give that to our town manager, please? Mr. Talbot? I have seven questions.
And I should mention, this is not just me, the other businesses on Main Street are really being.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going on to our consent agenda. Y'all have your reports in your packets. Does anybody have any questions for Mike? We'll start with him. Mike, anything you want to talk about first?
I, I'll make one correction. It was pointed out to me today that I have on there that in my report, that transnoxing tax decreased 17%, I believe it increased instead of decreased. I apologize for that.
Let me back up, Mike, as I skip over agenda adoption. I need a motion for agenda adoption, please.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Ellen, second by Mr. Mccone to adopt tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
That's the only correction I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? All right, Tyler?
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, please. Tonight, I have Bo Brady with us. He is a new hire for our agency. Today was his first day, hence why he doesn't have any uniform on just yet. Stuff is in the mail, and we hope that he gets it soon, but he comes to us from the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel with seven years' experience, so we're very anxious for him to hit the road, the road running, and he's going to be with Jeff Stevens for a little while, first of field training. Once he's completed that, he'll be out on his own, so if you see him out and about, just give him a wave.
I thought that that was the new undercover digs.
Yeah. Yeah, switching to blue. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I look forward to serving you guys.
Thank you.
Dick, I think you went to school here, didn't you?
No, ma'am.
Did your brothers?
No.
Anything else, Tyler?
No, ma'am.
Any questions for Tyler? All right, Wes?
I don't have anything to add other than my report.
Any questions for Wes?
Yeah, I'd like to ask. With the tide going out tonight, Sunday, were you able to go around and look at anything today?
I was.
And how, what did, what, what found out?
I've found that there is a check valve still in the pipe at the foot of the bridge, but I've got to pump water in order to get down there and do a thorough investigation. Obviously, it's not holding. It is covered with oysters. I was able to see that much, but I think, I'm hoping that tomorrow, at low tide, we can pump the, pump the pipe the rest of the way out, because it was still 33% full even with the tide all the way down. But I've done a lot of investigating, but I need to do a thorough inspection that I haven't been able to do yet because of the tides.
Any more questions for Wes?
No, we'll go more, more on the Public Works.
Madam.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the tie-ins on the sewers, fine, they all finished?
They've got about three more nights to go.
Three more nights?
Yep.
Okay.
They, they will be done this week for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Then we'll start milling and paving?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
And have that done by Thanksgiving?
That's the goal, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Wheatley, welcome.
Hello.
Any questions for Jamie on the emergency services October report? Anything you want to add to it?
Now, the totals, I believe, we sent out were 26. They changed, the 66 is the total number, 16 ALS, 31 BLS, and 19 other, that's all the changes.
All right. Any more questions for government? Any more questions about your minutes from workshop, cemetery, or public safety, or BNP? So I need a, a motion to adopt the consent agendas.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Savage, second by Mr. Mccone to adopt the consent agendas. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Carrie. So we already did our proclamation, so now we're going to move on to the planning commission recommendation. Mr. Bott?
Do you want me to start with a motion, then it'll go to discussion? Yeah, so I'm, make a motion on behalf of the planning commission to recommend a tax amendment to the C2 Old Town Commercial Zoning District to require a conditional use permit for Assembly A uses with the expected occupancy of more than 50 persons.
Mayor, I have a question.
Got a motion first, got a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Bott, second by Mr. Howard.
So I have first right to speak on it?
Yep.
So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda, she's going to do a thorough investigation, thorough presentation here on, maybe a little more explanatory than we had last time on what we're looking at.
Amanda?
I want to start by apologizing for the explanation of last time. It slipped my brain that I'm in front of a new group here, new audience, seeing it for the first time. We'd already talked about it a couple times in planning commission, so in-depth explanation for everybody here, so there's not any misunderstanding. So first of all, I want to talk about the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2020. We reviewed the comp plan for consistency for this amendment, and these items of, from goals and strategies, are all directly taken from the comprehensive plan. And basically, all of these, retaining small to medium commercial services, maintaining and enhancing the area's pedestrian-oriented shopping district, promoting infill and redevelopment that's consistent with the existing character and scale, consider preparing building appearance and architectural designs that are appropriate to the existing patterns, and improving the quality of local streets, public parking, and pedestrian systems where possible, are all effects of this amendment. The goal here is to ensure that new businesses that are coming to redevelop a lot or develop a remaining lot, though very few of them, for the first time, are not putting additional burden on the town's infrastructure. Those items should be rightfully created, like parking, lighting, utility, infrastructure, should all be provided by the developer, because that's not a burden the town is necessarily ready to take on for a private project. So the summary of these proposed amendments, removes uses classified by International Building Code as Assembly A with occupancy limits of 50 persons from allowed by right, and now requires a conditional use permit. And then Assembly A uses with occupancy limits less than 50 persons are classified as Assembly B, which is also how it's written in the building code. That's not something that we determined. And Assembly B uses are still allowed by right, and it's also important to note that this, these changes only apply to the C2 district. So some examples of Assembly A uses are amusements, bowling arcades, dance halls, churches, museums, theaters, arenas, nightclubs, large restaurants. And then Assembly B uses are any A uses with that less than 50-person threshold or less than 750 square feet of assembly space. So that's kind of where the hotels came into play, I think, in the zoning code, is because hotels have multiple uses. Some of them have the restaurant, some of them have just the rooms, some of them have a banquet hall or assembly space, so I think that's why that's in there. But other B uses are banks, barber shops, outpatient clinics, post offices, professional services, those kinds of things. So then, a conditional use permit itself, just so we understand what that is, it's a zoning tool that allows council to review development that may have significant impact on the adjacent properties and the town's infrastructure. And it, like I said, it just makes sure that projects are sustainably developed, sustainably funded, and sustainably maintained. It does not automatically deny a use, it's just a way to allow use in a manner that does not negatively impact its surroundings. So it gives the town the opportunity to leverage with developers and say, okay, maybe, you know, maybe your occupancy is higher than this 50-person Assembly B use. What are your plans for parking? Can you provide the parking on-site? Because the town, as we know, is very limited in downtown parking. Or we could say, you know, okay, so maybe your business requires 100 parking spaces, but you can only provide 80 on-site, but in But in exchange, you could, you know, subsidize additional public parking or you could upgrade this infrastructure in exchange for that allowance. And it can be revoked or altered at any time to ensure compliance. So if the project starts off and it's not developed in the manner that it needs to be and they're not providing adequate services for the use, then that's something that you can renegotiate over. We do this currently in water main extensions. If a developer is putting a new project on a piece of property that doesn't have access to a water main, it's not the town's responsibility to run the water main to that property. It is developer's responsibility. So it's something we're already similarly doing. So the conditions you can address by a conditional use permit include traffic and circulation, pedestrian routing, ADA access, parking, life safety and emergency access, hours of operation and noise levels, refuse sanitation, adequate water and sewer capacity, landscaping, open space, architectural standards, and pedestrian and lighting improvements or repairs to existing facilities as needed. And so then finally, the effects of the proposed amendments, I just want to reiterate, that applies only to new development or businesses redeveloping and changing their occupancy. Does not affect anybody existing. It ensures that new development stays consistent with the existing character of the C2 and it allows council to make those conditions or concessions for uses that could have significant impact.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, so are hotels even allowed with conditional use?
That is something we can look into.
Okay, so, okay, back to, back to Mr. Eby, it's, okay. What I'm looking for, like where Alix is, if I just bought that property, which I didn't, I promise you. But if I bought that property, my plan was to have anything, you just, you just kill it. You just knock me right out. And this one's easy. And I can make a real quick fix on this one. When you buy a piece of property, this is my, this is my opinion, you have vested rights because you bought it with a certain way. When you take that away from me, you just kill me. And that's, if you want to know why you can't get loans for, for land, it's just this reason. Because a planning commission and a town council can make your land worthless. So what I'm saying, the fix, my fix is, when you buy a piece of property, you get to keep. I call it vested rights, you can call it grandfather clause, but you call it grandfather clause if it's already built. But when you buy the property, what you bought it and what was it, what was it zoned for and what it was done for, you get to use it. Now, when you go to sell it, that person already knows it was a change. That's just my opinion and you're not going to change my mind on that. I can tell you, I live right next door, when I bought the property next door, this town was going to change it to resource conservation. Young family, get ready to build a house. And I can tell you, this wasn't a happy camper. And like I said, that, that means you could not build your home on it. And, and that to me is not good whatsoever. You're not going to change my mind on that. To me, that's a fix. Somebody else in this whole room might not agree with me. When you buy a piece of property and it's zoned a certain way, it shouldn't be taken away from you. Now, when I go to sell it, I understand, I changed my mind on what I was going to do. That next customer, he knows he can't put the hotel there. And I don't want to build no hotel either. But that's what I'm saying, you're taking, you're taking somebody's value, what they bought it for, away. And in this case, I put, when I bought that property, where Alix is, they built my hotel, I can't even build it right now. And that's what I got to say.
Any more questions, comments?
No, I'll just, I gotta agree with Gene. I think what he says about the inherent right, when someone bought that property, using the example that he used, you know, just a few short months ago for well over a million dollars. I'm sure there was some type of plan there as far as what they wanted to turn that property into within the zoning requirements or zoning conditions at that time. And I, I'm like Gene, if, if we're going to make a change like this, there needs to be some type of grandfather clause with this or grandfather provision to allow that to come to fruition. I agree with Gene. If, if the property is sold, then you know what? Those folks that are buying it understand it, they should do due diligence to see what current zoning regulations are. So I would certainly concur that if something like this, if the council were going to attain something of this nature, this change, that we certainly need to look at folks that have recently or folks that currently own the property. The other question I do have is, let's say there's an existing hotel. Let's just use Comfort Suites as an example. And let's say Comfort Suites wanted to do an expansion. And if we're talking about accommodating fifty persons, most rooms accommodate four people. So I would say, I would estimate somewhere that'd be around twelve or thirteen rooms, which really wouldn't justify the cost of an expansion for just that few amount of rooms. So in that, with that example, if you did have a hotel that wanted to do an expansion, how would that play as far as the condition, you know, how would the conditional use process work? And would it even be allowed where in previous comments, we're talking about moving that, you know, that would be in Group R?
So I think that you would need to consider the amount of redevelopment that you're doing because you're not changing the use, you're expanding an existing use. It's not substantial, you're not tearing it down and building a new hotel. So in my professional opinion, I don't think that would trigger a conditional use permit because you're maintaining the same use on the property.
No matter how big the expansion would be?
In my, well, I think you need to consider what is the threshold. And that's something our code doesn't define. Redevelopment is not well-defined, but generally, more than fifty percent of your existing footprint or value can be considered substantial redevelopment.
My question is, so if somebody wants to put up a seventy-room hotel, how many parking spots are required for that?
I would have to look at the parking table. I don't know off the top of my head.
That's also already with the building department. That's already, how many parking spaces you need?
I know, I just, I just know now.
But no, no, but what I'm saying, but that's already, that's not, nothing's going, this is going to protect it. It's already protecting.
Mike, do you know that off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I need you to answer.
It's two per room, but parking's not required in that area, right?
I'm sorry?
Parking's not required in C2 historic, right?
Yes, historically in the C2 downtown area, park, off-street parking is not required, which is another reason for the, for this change or recommended change. Because since, and the reason parking is not required, my understanding is that the old C2 zoning, there was two commercial zones back in the day, C1 and C2. The downtown was the only C2 area you were allowed to build with no setbacks right to the property line. As many folks did, there are still several buildings down there built right to the property line. And because they left no residual property and there were no parking regulations back in the day, and the continued use of those properties today doesn't allow adequate parking. Sometime back in the seventies, I believe, the downtown parking lot was created for the purpose of helping to park folks that were visiting downtown businesses. Now we recognize that redeveloping that area, there is not enough land to adequately park some of the businesses that could potentially be located down there, which is why, one of the reasons why the C2, this change to C2 has been proposed because there is a limitation of services available for those businesses. The idea again was not to say no, but to let council take a look at it so they can see that the developer has made accommodations for everything that they want to do. And one of those accommodations would be to how you're going to park all the people who are going to visit your new facility.
Okay. Gene?
Mike?
Yes, sir.
You're saying that in town, there is, you don't have to have parking?
That has been the...
On-site parking?
Off-site, off-street parking, correct.
So we owe the, our company a big apology, didn't we? Because the body that wanted to buy the farmhouse was turned down because it didn't have parking. Am I right or wrong? We owe them a big apology. Big one.
Any more questions for Amanda? Chris?
No, no, I mean, I'll just say, you know, I agree with Gene on the property rights to an extent. And the reason here is, large-scale development in that downtown area is going to be a burden on the people that are already existing. We're not fortunate, but we see this happening right now with our friends down here at the Tiki. It's become a burden on business on either side. Under this, under this zoning change, we would have been allowed to grant the Tiki to operate, permit to operate, but we would have been able to put like a noise stipulation on it. This is just for example. That being that if they did violate the noise ordinance, we could pull the permit to operate, their conditional use permit right away. This was actually done in Virginia Beach, if you all remember, about, how many years ago was it? Because we were talking about it, Mike.
I won't say it was five, six years ago.
About six years ago, Virginia Beach allowed an area to be developed that was kind of blighted. And when the development came, it was a nightclub area. Nightclubs like to go, and they use the cluster effects, like to go in there in a cluster. But the city went in there and said, we're going to let you do it with a conditional use permit. If you all remember this, and my details may be a little shady, but anytime we have trouble or violence occurs and so forth, we're pulling your conditional use permit. Well, sure enough, I think they had a shooting.
They had several.
Several shootings outside these nightclubs late at night. So the city came in there and pulled the permits on Saturday morning for all, it was at three nightclubs, I think. That's kind of options that this gives us here as a little bit of control so that when we do have development come in there, especially on a large scale, we're not adversely affecting the existing businesses that are already there and causing them not to thrive. I mean, that's kind of the way I'm looking at this one. Just because this is a fragile area down there. We just don't have the facilities and the resources in that area. So that's impetus behind it.
People already got the noise ordinance, I mean, like I say, what is it done?
But we ain't doing a real good job with them.
Huh?
We're not being able to do anything.
Well, like I said, we got to get it, we got to nail that down. Because like I said, I agree with her. She's got a great place.
It could be noise, it could be parking, it could be noise. You can put your conditional use any kind of way. You know, right now, that particular establishment, when it existed, one from Methodist Church's parking lot. You know, that's another thing. We got, we're using, they're using Methodist Church's parking lot on Friday and Saturday nights.
But that's private property and shirts can call them up and toss them away.
But we have nothing, we can do as a town to prevent that.
That's a private property. Like I said, the Methodist Church's can call them up and toss them away.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
So we had a, this was brought to council last month on a recommendation from the planning commission to adopt this. Is that your recommendation right now, Chris?
Motion, second. I mean, I'll call for a vote, can you call for a vote?
Any more discussion? All right, got a motion and a second to adopt this C2 change from the planning commission to council. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Ellen?
I think leave it like it is.
All right, failed. Four to two. Okay. Next up, consider request for support, Mr. McCon.
All right, so our last budget personnel meeting, council tasked us with reviewing the applications that have been made for donation this year. You know, it was discussed during the meeting that our budget from last year was increased from twenty-six thousand to twenty-eight thousand. This year had many applicants, a lot deserving, all deserving in their own way. And the list that council has in front of them is the list that was suggested by budget personnel to be presented and forwarded to council for approval. And I won't go through reading all the ones on this list, but as we are also tasked to stay within budget, it does total twenty-eight thousand. Now, when we were doing this, there were some changes made to the request for, the amount of requests that were made in some circumstances. And then there were some that we were allowed, we weren't able to consider and pass on. So you have the information in front of you if you have any questions shortly. Budget personnel committee will be glad to answer or any other discussion.
Counsel? Any questions for going? Any questions about the donations?
There's a total of eleven listed on the memo in front of you, if I count that correctly. The other thing that the committee did mention just for consideration for next year, we have a donation that we do as far as to the Cultural Alliance for a matching grant that's on a separate line item right now in our budget. Every year we give standard, we've given standard donations to both the Museum of Shingitig as well as the Shingitig Island Library. It was also the opinion of the committee that this year, when we looked at budget, that we pull those out as separate line items as well and then adjust our total donation budget outside of that so that they're not in this process moving forward. And it does keep the process simpler as we review donations in upcoming years.
All right, so you all see the donation list there? Need a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCon, second by Ms. Ellen to move forward with these donations for this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right, Mr. Talbrough, presentation of proposed purchase.
Thank you, ma'am. Give me just a second. Oh, what's going on there? Okay, thank you very much. As it's been previously stated, the town is considering the purchase of a large tract of property on South Main Street for the main purpose of creating a park. Goals and objectives for this purchase are to transform the underutilized two-acre parcel onto, into a multi-public waterfront destination that supports recreation, environmental education, and community gathering, to prioritize public access, to maintain beautiful and functional outdoor public places within the town of Shingitig, and to ensure opportunities for public access to the waterfront and preserve open space, which is rapidly developing on southern end of Main Street. I will say here that this is a two-acre parcel. You'll hear, if you ask for appraisals of property, you will hear the term highest and best use. I think I have that correct, of a piece of property. I will tell you that the highest and best use of this property, in other words, what's going to make it most profitable is not a park. However, if it were to be sold for its highest and best use, it could be one of several things. It could be a hotel. It could also be developed, it is zoned as four, which is resort commercial. That is a potential, some multifamily residences are allowed by right. This property could support eight single-family residences. And if you see the piece of property just to the south of it, which adjoins it, there's already three residences being built on that small piece of property. So you can see what is possible. I calculate loosely that eight residences could be built on this property as well as about twenty-four multifamily units. And those are townhouses, condominiums, anything like that. I think you could easily see that the property, the shoreline there could be walled off from the public and be in private hands very simply. Just to point this out, I'll go back to the nineteen eighties when some townhouse projects were developed and constructed on the east side of the island and we heard several complaints about limiting the view on the east side of the island, that sort of thing. That could easily be done here. It would be very profitable for a private developer to do that. The current property that we're discussing is, has four hundred linear feet of accessible waterfront. As I mentioned, it's over two acres. It was formerly used for construction lay-down yard. It has a brand-new bulkhead installed along the entire shoreline within the past two years. And it is prime real estate for potential... for potential town use within the rapidly expanding South Main Street area. Details of the sales, proposed purchase price is $2.25 million. Uh, to purchase this property, the town would not increase taxes, either excise taxes, property taxes, or personal property taxes. This could be completely funded from town reserves. The project is shovel-ready, to use the term, uh, the lot's already cleared, and it's filled with a new bulkhead ready for construction. Now, that being said, uh, the town will do its due diligence, uh, we will do an environmental assessment to make sure there, uh, there is nothing that we'd be purchasing which was, would cost a bunch of money to mediate. And I'm going to, uh, I'm going to, uh, outline the parks that we already have. Uh, we have six parks currently, Memorial Park probably one of the largest on the east side of the island, uh, Brianna's Condes Park and Robert Reed Park are downtown, uh, Leonard Park on North Main Street, the Dog Park and Nature Trails, which are in the north-southern part of the island. We do not have anything on South Main Street or in that immediate area, um, as far as a park. Possible uses, um, viewing, a boardwalk, observation docks, uh, viewing for rocket launches, sunsets, uh, boating, wildlife gazing, uh, fishing and crabbing, of course, uh, occasional food truck vendors, uh, festivals, weddings, and other gatherings, events on the lawn, like we currently have at Robert Reed, um, certain festivals, seating in picnic areas, motorized, non-motorized, uh, boats and sports, water sports, public art and historical heritage installations, and, um, and various other things that could be happening. The, the possibilities are limitless with this. Um, now, I'm going to go back and give you an example of what could be done. Back in the 70s and 80s, uh, those of you who remember, um, that Robert Reed Park was not what it is today. It was an area that was used for offloading and docking and mooring of clam boats, which at the time were a huge economic boon to the island. Uh, American Original owned this property, they operated numerous boats from this property, um, and it not only benefited, the economy did not only benefited the crews in these boats, it benefited the people who were selling fuel to the boats, it benefited the people who were driving trucks with the product from these boats, it benefited people who were selling, uh, stores to provision to boats. Uh, I can tell you that my father bought two brand-new cranes unloading these boats. Uh, it was a big economic boon to the area, but when the, um, when the market, or not the market, but when the permits for offshore clamming started to disappear, and those clam boats likewise started to disappear, uh, the property there in the middle of town, uh, was left pretty much in the bladed condition it was. And I've, I've done a little research on this, the town approached, uh, a group of businessmen and women and asked them to purchase the property and hold it in trust for the town, which they did. There were five original, uh, members of the consortium, they consisted of, uh, four men and one businesswoman from the island. They purchased the property and held it in trust for the town supposedly for not more than a year or two. Uh, a year or two turned into 10 years, nearly 10 years, that the, uh, the, the, uh, group of businessmen held the property, all the while making the payments on the loan and trying to work the property as much as they could with docking and other things, uh, to make the payments. Finally, after nearly 10 years, the town purchased the property, and they began to make improvements, and you see what it looks like today. Uh, I'm sorry, there, there's the property that American Original owned it, you can see it's purely industrial, there's not much attention to any detail there. The property today looks completely different, it's about an acre on Main Street, uh, on the water. Uh, it was purchased by the town in 2002 for $575,000. It is a showpiece of the center of town right now, used for all sorts of different things, from festivals to the bike, uh, to the poker run, uh, to just people that want to walk on the boardwalk, there's 10, uh, permanent slips there, uh, picnic facilities, um, and I will tell you that the town continues to plan improvements for that, we currently have a plan to install floating docks to make it easier to moor your boat there, to encourage more people to visit downtown. Um, that is an example of what can be done when you have a vision of what, uh, a park could be. The difference is then it took 10 years apparently for the town to come up with the money to actually purchase this park and start to make improvements. Right now, the town does have the money in its reserves to purchase this piece of property and keep it from being privately developed and taken, uh, out of the public use category.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council first? So, in a rare move, we're going to open back up for some public comment, is there anybody out there who would like to, uh, speak on the possible purchase of this property? Mr. Landsberger? Yes.
David Landsberger, Amory and Circle Drive. Uh, I just have a question. I know that the, you listed the parks, and I, as you know, I was involved in building one of them. There is a lot of other property that the town owns, such as the property in between Oyster Bay and Richard's Landing, which, which I donated, which is on the water, and I don't know, do we have any plans of turning any of that property into either parks or some kind of use before we spend money on land that we don't own?
I don't know that there's any plans for that just yet, no. Anyone else? Stewart?
Just in addition to what I previously stated, I won't go over that again, but being a harbor leasing and knowing how the campground's in that vicinity, those folks come down, they run a campsite, they bring a boat, and they come to take over the harbor, whether it's utilizing on parking in the harbor, if you go out for a day fishing, you come in, throw boats in, you slip. You've got that to contend with, you know, and it's not part of that business. So, I would caution you in, in the development of this, if you do purchase it, in establishing some clearly defined guidelines for its utilization, that it doesn't present the perception that you're just justifying established businesses, make it very, very clear, this is for our heritage, this is not for commercialization. Now, because it could, I can see it very easily in the summer months, being taken over very, very easily, so I just caution you for that.
Thank you. Tina, you have something?
I live on South Main, uh, well, middle, mid-south, um, and, uh, I'm not a big fan of the businesses that have sprung up at the end, um, and the traffic that they've brought, because it used to be more permanent campsites down there, and now we have a lot of transients, and like you said, they come for the day, and they go back and forth and back and forth. So, um, but I'm going to tell you, I think this is a great idea. Um, whatever you put there, um, it has to be better than a hotel or a bunch of townhouses, and I do think even if it's just open, and we have a place where people can see the sunset, um, that's something that they're missing. I, I know that, because they come and park in front of our house. Um, you know, if you drive down Main Street, you see, there's, there's nothing but buildings and buildings and buildings, and people kind of give up, and they think, "Oh, I can't see what it used to look like." And, um, I kind of miss, it was kind of nice seeing the old pictures, because that's what it used to look like, it was a, a working commercial waterfront. Um, I mean, we're not going back to that, but I do think it's nice to have an open place, um, and I, I'm glad we protected the east side, um, maybe let's protect a little bit of the west.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary?
I'd like to see us preserve it too, and my suggestion would be, while we're thinking of how we're going to develop it, to possibly make it a place, um, for more of like the food trailers, but have it more, like, I, I've been to Austin before, and they'll take a piece of property, they'll put tables out there, um, you know, make it a, a place that you just come to sit around and enjoy it, but the food's there, different kinds of food, different ethnicities, and in the meantime, they would be paying the town for the use of the property, we would get some revenue back, we would get tax money back, et cetera, and, but yet it would still be our property to later on be developed as we wanted to develop it.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could I, I'm sorry, could we get your name and address first?
Mary DePietro, uh, 7171 Mason Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, or we could make, think in terms of like a sunset festival type of place, where maybe you get some local entertainers that'll play music or have some juggling skills, and, uh, people could sell their crafts and artwork and photos, and, but you go down there and, you know, you enjoy the, the setting, chairs out to watch the sunset, et cetera.
Thank you. Ms. Caesar?
Carrie Caesar, 3768 Willow. Um, I appreciate what Mary said, and also, um, yes, I'm sorry, don't, don't know all the names, but, um, I, I want to give the example of, uh, many of us have been to places like Dewey Beach and up in Fenwick, just up in the Delaware, Bethany and those ways, and when you want to see the water, you cannot see the water, because it is blocked by privacy fences, and this is private land, you can't come here, it's very off-putting. And when I first visited Shinkatik, because of my friend Eileen who was here, and she loved it with her kids for decades, and I said, "I've got to go, I've got to see it," and I appreciated immediately the feeling of community, and that it's an open place, and that the, I, to a person I've, I have met, everyone here has been so friendly to me as a new, you know, come here, and I want to see that, I want to have others to share that, that welcome feel, and not feel like it's closed off, this is private. So I love the presentation that you did, I was unaware of the history of Robert Reed, so that really spoke to me, but I would like to see it maintained as a place where all can enjoy, particularly the sunset and the heritage.
Thank you. Last call, anyone else?
I am certainly in favor of this, and I heard Mr. Talburt use the words "public art," um, which we don't have a lot of, um, and there are many ways it can be done. I think a space to look at the sunsets, I live just north of where Tina lives, and, um, there are frequently cars parked blocking Main Street stopping for the sunset, and I really can't blame them, because they, of course, are spectacular. Um, and we, we need, um, to communicate to our visitors that we are more than just hotels along the waterfront, that's incredibly important, that's what sets us apart from Ocean City and, uh, the other Delaware towns along, uh, that Carrie just mentioned, where you cannot see the water. It is, it is an important addition to attract visitors, um, however we decide to use it, which I think there are a lot of great ways, including putting some public art there.
Thank you.
Oh, Pat Farley, uh, 3243 Lees's Lane.
Thank you. Do you have something?
Pretty young, but we can send that back to you, Sandra. Um, just briefly, we get many, many calls for people looking to have weddings on Chiqui, there are very few places to have weddings on Chiqui. If there was a pavilion included in the design, um, I don't know how the city could benefit financially from that, but I bet they could, if they charged for that, so that's just my contribution.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mike.
I just, uh, what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. David Murphy, 7550 Lees's Lane. Uh, just, uh, something to consider, I'm sure would come up, but, um, uh, public access as far as walking there, uh, would probably be an advantage, I'm not sure if that's possible given the, the dimensions, but, uh, the other thing would be, um, you said it's only two acres, I would wonder where you can put all the parking for that, so, as well as all the facilities, so, just, uh...
Things to be worked out. All right, we don't need to do anything else from that team.
No, ma'am.
We're having a public hearing next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
On the workshop or December meeting?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Public hearing will be at the workshop.
All right, public hearing on the proposed purchase of this land will be at the workshop meeting on November 20th, 6:00 PM, right here. If anybody wants to come back, express your opinions on it again, or learn more about it, um, but I think you got the gist of it, of what we're trying to do. All right, uh, going to mayor, council, and comments, I'll start with you, Mr. Savage.
I, I need to appreciate everybody's opinions and so forth, and, uh, thank you for coming out, see you all.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, thank everybody for your opinions and, I, input, thanks, there's a lot of good ideas, I've heard, and I ain't about what we can do with it. Thank you.
Mr. McCombe?
So, I'll just chime in, um, Stewart made some comments, um, as far as the town attorney and retainer, couldn't agree more, I think that's something that we've all talked about in the past, about the, um, access to that person and, and having them, um, available to the town, and then also, I agree 100%, we talked about it in the budget personnel committee meeting, the last meeting we had a couple weeks ago, about the need for the audits to be on-site, and then also the importance of potentially whatever, um, whatever group we would, we would select next, that they be in closer proximity to Shinkatik, um, so that, um, you know, getting help from them on different projects, and then also being able to interact with them, be a little bit easier than a, a larger firm that's in the arrangement itself.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, we talked about during the election, preserving the downtown, and I'll say that it was a job well done, the planning commission has worked hard, and we appreciate the work that you've done, and I hope that you continue discussion on this, especially with Saptik coming, you know, I think when it booms, sky's the limit, we don't want to change the aesthetics of downtown, it's what brings people here, and it's what keeps us a small town. So, I encourage the planning commission to continue to work on that, so that we can come to a, a compromise.
Thank you. Mr. Bot?
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking there, Mike's presentation, so my father is one of the five that held the land, part of the group that held the land for the 10 years for Robert Reed Park, and I believe in the end it actually went down to four people. The, um, I was younger at the time, and they had all their meetings in our den, so I was a, my room was above the den, I used to, I used to listen to the, uh, we have a little event, so the heat could go off, I used to listen to the meetings in my bedroom, but anyway. You know, that property was that close for being townhouses. The group of four got to a division point, or two wanted to move, because they were tired waiting on the town, and two wanted to go forward, but hold it for the town. Dad, of course, was the one that wanted to hold it for the town, but I think they had a profound effect on me, because, you know, we as a council, you know, we need to preserve downtown, you know, we ran on that, a lot of us ran on that during our elections, but, you know, the planning mission has worked hard, you need to give more comment on what you think, you know, we can only do so much before we're running against a brick wall here, because we decide, but, you know, if we want to preserve downtown, we need to do that, because if we don't do it, it's not going to be preserved. Fortunately, in our past, people did make that decision to do that, and we need to carry on that tradition.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Uh, I'd like to comment on what Ms. Caesar said about the traffic. Uh, I've been, most of them in here know that I drive a school bus, and traffic, I've had more people... more people than this past year run through the red lights, and you blow the horn, and it's like, ah, and they go, oh, then they realize it's a big yellow cheese wagon sitting there. So, and they come out, they're on your bumper, the speed limit's 25, and they got, Tina, that speed limit thing down there, that gets me every once in a while, it'd be 26, and I have to drop her back to 25. It's hard to do, in a bus. That's a straightaway going that way. But anyway, people are, they're not thinking, they're either on their phones, they're in a hurry, and they're going nowhere. And they're right on, they're, I said, whatever happened to common courtesy when you're driving? You're supposed to have the golden rule, treat others the way you want to be treated, but they don't. So yeah, I understand. I mean, you take your life in your hands when you, you're out there. So I don't know what we can do about it. The policeman can't be everywhere, every time. This afternoon, I come to the bus, I heard sirens on Halle Wilt, and I said, woo-hoo, get somebody, because they zip through there just like, so, anyway, we're working on it. What the answer is, I don't know. We've just got to educate people, that's all. Or a lot of it, let's put it that way. But thank you for saying that. So I understand, that's what I do for a living, is driving. Thank you.
So lastly, I want to thank everybody who's here tonight that's either come to speak or came to listen, and those that are, hopefully are out there watching on the overhead monitor up there. This is how government works. This is how you run government, is when you get your people involved. And I love seeing this, because, you know, we need your input on these things. Chris said, you know, about running for, for office, and we all have our, our little things that we're interested in, and how we would like to see things. You've heard me say many times, I'm not opposed to growth, but I think we have to be responsible with it. And I don't know that the town has necessarily been that responsible in the last 10, 12 years with things. Planning Commission is there for a reason. They're there to investigate these things, along with Amanda, our planner, we, you know, we've hired her for a reason, because we've all seen the explosive growth that we've had, and, you know, those of us that grew up here, the changes that have, that have come about has just been mind-blowing. And we need to be more responsible with how, how we tackle things. I've heard words tonight like heritage, and old town, downtown, and things like that, and it's, you know, again, not against it, but you've got to be responsible with it. And everybody wants to prosper, and I want everybody to prosper. I want our businesses to prosper, I want our people that live here to prosper. But I've also learned one thing, especially in the last year, it's not all about the dollar. It's not all about the dollar, because let me tell you something, we're all going to be, you know, when you're sitting over there at Mandy's, pretty soon we're all going to be six foot under with the same thing in our pockets, nothing. So, you know, you got to, we got to do our best to, to continue to make Chinkatee one of the greatest places in the world, but also be very responsible with how we make it one of the greatest places in the world. Actually, it is the greatest place in the world, in my opinion, but we have to continue to make it on that path. So thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it, and hope you all come out, workshop meeting and the next meetings, and if you're listening out there, you know, you can contact me, I've said it more than once. I've got six other council members here that need to hear your voice too. So, you know, get in contact with them, you've got something on your mind, you know, let them know. They need to hear it too, so. With that being said...
Ma'am, Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just a quick note along those lines, Leanne tells me there are currently 98 people watching online.
98 people watching online, that's good. And, you know, that's great, having this, this system right here. It's for people that, that, you know, they can't necessarily get out here to a meeting. They're listening, and they might listen, they might email us later, they might call us later about something. So that's, that's the importance of having, you know, this system set up with that. Thank you, Mike. So with that being said, I'll need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with section 2.2-3711A, 37 of the Code of Virginia. I move that council convenia closed session for the consideration of the disposition of real property and the briefing of staff members of specific legal matches. Got a motion by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. McComb, going to closed session. Thank you, everybody.